I call this meeting of the Upstate County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It's a nice rainy day, Saliba. We'll begin with Tony reading the minutes from last week's meeting. Thank you, Judge.
The county commission of Upstate County West Virginia held their regular meeting at the courthouse amex on Thursday, April 9, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, and Jethlyn Deek, Law Care Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of April 2, 2015, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the Community Participation Grant Program application and associated documents for project number 15 LEDA 0153 in the amount of $20,000 for landscaping, renovations, upgrades, and improvements to the Upstate County Youth Camp. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant agreement by and between the West Virginia Division of Culture and History, Archives and History, Records Management and Preservation Board, and the Upstate County Commission. The grant award in the amount of $10,000 will be used to digitize chancery and law case files in the Upstate County Circuit Clerk's office. After review of correspondence from Columbia Gas Transmission LLC concerning the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's pre-filing review process, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission agreed to send a representative to attend the local FERC meeting. However, they declined to comment in the FERC review process. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the work order from Tyson Krupp in the amount of $1,063, which will void the work order in the amount of $3,371 that was approved at the April 2 commission meeting. Carrie Wallace advised that the previously proved work order provided unnecessary enhancements of an ADA compliant emergency phone in the courthouse and accelerator, and the updated work order will sufficiently provide the requirements of the ADA. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the employment of Cecilia Vertoliva as full-time housekeeper. Effective date of employment is April 13, 2015, at the rate of $8 per hour as recommended by Greg Harris, Director of Facilities Operations. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the promotion of Stephanie M. Jack to the position of regular full-time telephone carrier, effective April 9, 2015, as requested by Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director. Ms. Jack's pay rate will remain at her current rate of $10 per hour. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the resignation retirement of James Ferry as Office of Emergency Management Director, effective May 1, 2015. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four year information items. Correspondence from Aura Ash State Auditor's Office announcing the conditional approval of the fiscal year 2016 living estimate. Carrie Wallace advised the conditional status is due to a technical error concerning the updating of the salary schedule of the prosecuting attorney. Correspondence from John McGarrett, West Virginia Development Office announcing the annual self-inspection reports for land and water conservation fund assisted parks due Friday, May 29, 2016. Correspondence from Carrie Wallace to Jody Light announcing the donation of 10 one-day pool classes to Almost Have a Barbecue Bash to be used as prizes for the kids' Q barbecue contest. Correspondence from Melissa Richardson, West Virginia Division of Labor regarding the recent elevator inspection and required repairs. Building permits, March 2015. Cat report, March 2015. Family Resort Network Newsletter, April 2015. Agendas and notices of meetings as listed, meeting minutes as listed, meetings as listed. Appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission recesses at 9:20 a.m. The commission reconvened at 9:30 a.m. Jody Light, Almost Have a Barbecue Bash organizer, appeared before the commission and read the proclamation designated June 19th and 20th, 2015, as the Upstate County Barbecue Championship. This event will raise funds for the Rotary's Polio Plus program and provide fundraising opportunities to local nonprofit organizations. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission recesses at 11:30 a.m. The commission convened at 1 p.m. Ares, DeBisees, and legal representatives came before the commission for a hearing of final settlement for the estate of Bertha Virginia Smith. Miss Smith died in July of heart attack. Richard Marshall, attorney representing the interests of Melvin Riley and Larry Riley, appeared before the commission and provided a review of objections to the final settlement. Primary issues of contention were overpayment of funeral service paid to Paul and St. Clair Funeral Home in the amount of $2,000. Question of legality of amount over and above the amount stated in the original preneed contract. Contract was for $3,000. Final contract after price increases over 20 years more or less was $5,403. Missing items, Carol Shelby racing flag and sapphire bracelet. Melvin and Riley alleged that the missing items were in the trunk, which was devised to Melvin Riley. Daya Wright, fiduciary commissioner, advised that in a June 17, 2014 hearing of the case, it was determined that the missing flag had not been seen in a period of well over 20 years, and the bracelet was last seen around 2008, 2009. There is no way to conclude that either item had ever been in the trunk. Woman already testified that Ms. Smith had purchased an insurance policy in the amount of $2,000 for the express purpose of covering the cost of funeral expenses which may have exceeded the original quote for the cost of funeral. In addition, Ms. Doherty was the beneficiary of the policy and had no legal obligation to pay Paul and St. Clair or include it in the estate, but did so because she knew it was her mother's wishes. Mrs. Doherty and Kara Sheed testified that the flag and bracelet were not in the trunk when they opened it. No, Mrs. Doherty and Mrs. Sheed were sworn in under oath administered by the Upstate County Clerk Debbie Decker Wolfhorn. Daya Wright advised that she owed additional fees. She was owed additional fees. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved that the $2,000 insurance policy, which Shane Mrs. Doherty has been a beneficiary, is not part of the estate. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved to uphold the previous fiduciary commissioners decision that the missing items in question, the Carol Shelby flag and the sapphire bracelet, if found, will go to Melvin and or Larry Riley. Otherwise, there is no obligation on the part of Ms. Doherty to replace those items. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the payment of additional fees to Daya Wright as fiduciary commissioner, with payment being made from the estate. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved that matters of final settlement of the estate of Bertha Virginia Smith are now closed, and settlement of the estate is approved with collective disbursement. The commission returned to open session at 2 p.m. With no further business on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission meeting adjourned at 2:10 p.m.
Thank you, Tony. Are any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Tony, if you wish, we have some water over there, because I know talking might be of some good. I can get myself a case. Well, first of all, first order of business today, I'd like to welcome our new Assistant County Administrator, Tabitha Perry. It's her first meeting today. She comes with us from a local-- she comes to us from a local law firm with seven years of experience, a bachelor's degree from Fairmont State University. And so far this week, our first week, it is Fairmont State.
Wesleyan.
Wesleyan. I am sorry. I have two children and a granddaughter Wesleyan and a wife that graduated from Wesleyan. I probably will never be allowed on campus again. I think I said that to a reporter. I think it was in the newspaper.
You did.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. I apologize immensely. But in the event, having said that, I'm even more than glad to hear you. And I know that you've been here a week now, or at least a partial week, having your first week. From my reading, of course, I've received you're doing very well. Welcome you aboard. Working with a very talented and qualified individual, so to the two of you, I'm sure that will be well-served, in our being well-served, by the administrators.
We're happy to have her on board.
Do you like to make any statements to the viewing audience or the--
Don't put her on the spot at first.
She'll be on the spot many times, I'm sure. So then, we will now then continue with items for discussion, action, or approval. We will have a discussion, or can have a discussion regarding the findings of Tara Con's inspection of the hillside slip. I think you requested that be postponed until later time because we're awaiting results of a survey that was-- a generic survey that was done. So we'll postpone that for a future inspection meeting. Next, we have agreement to purchase the new AS400 system. That's a computer system from Software Systems Incorporated in the amount of $46,712, including product of a three-year service agreement. Ms. Wallace, if you'd explain the purpose behind this decision. It's renovation.
AS400 systems typically last three to seven years. Our current system has been installed for seven years. We are experiencing increased problems with the age of the system. Our tax office, payroll, prosecuting attorney, and also the circuit clerk's office operate off of this system. So in the event that it would go down, it would put all four of those offices out of business for the time being. Right now, our maintenance contract on our current system expires on the 25th of April. We have a couple of different options. We could sign a one-year service agreement for $8,900, a three-year service agreement for $25,000, or we could purchase a new system for $47,000 that includes a three-year maintenance contract. I recommend to the commission to replace the AS400 system because if you spend the $8,900 or the $25,000 for either one of the maintenance contracts, the system could go down next month, and you would have to replace the entire system with a $27,000 expenditure. IBM will not credit you your maintenance contract that you purchased towards a new system. So with that being said, I would recommend that you purchase the new system in the amount of $47,000.
I think that sounds economical and efficient, because we've been told by the elected officials that operate under that AS400 system that they are experiencing delays in the processing. There's various other issues that can be overcome with the purchase of a new upgraded system. And beyond that, the $25,000 is incorporated, the maintenance contract is incorporated into $46,000, $47,000.
It's around $18,000 that's incorporated. The three-year warranty for the new system is only $18,000, so that is incorporated with the $47,000 estimate. And the reason why we cannot keep this system is because they do not make the discs that it requires any longer. We have, I believe, two discs on hand. However, sometimes the discs will only last for a period of a week, and they'll go bad. So--
It's okay. We're not only getting software, we're getting hardware, too.
You're getting an entire new system, yes. You have a hardware warranty that's included.
And that is necessary for the operations of very critical parts of the courthouse.
Yes. The assessor's office is the office I didn't mention--
Right, I didn't say assessor's office.
--that is also part of the AS400.
Which is very critical.
Yes.
So do I have a motion to agree to the purchase of that new AS400 system?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Thank you for that explanation.
I have one other question. Could you also give me permission to sign the documents that will be needed for the purchase of that system?
We can do so. There's a motion to authorize the administrator to sign that contract.
I'm moving. We approve that. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a contract bill for the NARE Corporation, amount of $495. Carrie, that's a fairly simple thing. Could you explain it again to the public?
Sure.
Why we entered into that contract with the NARE Corporation.
NARE is a company that we utilize for supply ordering. The supplies are free of cost, but the commission does pay for the shipping of the supplies. Supplies are used for all offices in the county, and you pay a subscription to receive the catalogs. There are two different options, $595, which includes a spring catalog, or $495, which includes summer, fall, New Year, and winter catalog. So I suggested that you order the four catalogs in the amount of $495. If you look on page five of the agenda, it will explain the savings that you receive from utilizing this system. We have received $7,800 in supplies, and they have cost us $1,600.
Right, so it's very cost-effective, easy business, and saving taxpayers money. Do I have a motion to approve the renewal of that contract?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have authorization for Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to use J.C. Rafferty's official signature stamp to sign required documentation on behalf of the Upstate County Commission. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'm moving. We approve that.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, correspondence from Donnie Rice, assessor requesting the conversion of any and all of his unused relief for service credit upon retirement, as required in the retirement plan of the employee handbook of personnel guidelines. We've done that in the past for other elected officials, people who were professional employees who then assumed electoral positions. So that's contained in the employee handbook. And he's requesting that within the allotted timeframe. I think we give him, what, six months, is it?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, okay. So do I have a motion to approve by Mr. Rice's request?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Donnie Rice, assessor requesting Mimi Riffle as full-time deputy assessor, the wage rate of $11 per hour, effective April 20, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept that request?
I'm moving to accept that request.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. And that money will not come out of the valuation fund, or rather, is county budget?
Correct. There has been a reallocation of the amount of money that comes out of valuation and the county budget. Previously, it was done in percentages, and that was very hard to calculate. It would be, for example, 77% out of County Commission general budget and 23% out of valuation. Donnie has made a change and reallocated that money in order for the full salary of Venus Truman to be taken from the valuation fund, and then the full salaries of both Mimi Riffle and Lisa Sevier to be taken out of the county budget. It's the same amount after the reallocation.
Right. We always appreciate the assessors for paying some of the employees out of the evaluation fund, because that is money that is not coming out of our general fund. Thank you. Next, we have correspondence from Steve Linger, E-911 Director, requesting the appointment of Syria J. Warner. First Sierra, I guess it would be, is J. Warner, as full-time tablet communicator at the wage rate of $10 per hour, effective April 27, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that request?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from David Gottman, prosecutor, requesting the employment of Roberta J. Samples as full-time legal assistant at the wage rate of $11.75 per hour, effective April 20, 2015. Do I have any motions or that request?
I have a question.
Yes, a motion or a question?
I have a question.
Okay.
About lunch.
Okay. We'll go with the question first.
The lady that left that position would make a $10.75, right?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
And her recent hire was also paid $10.75.
The recent hire is the same person that recently left the position. She was there for a few months.
Right, okay. And she was hired $10.75.
Correct.
Okay, now we go to your motion, Mr. Brady.
I have a motion that we start her at $10.75 an hour, and come first of July, she would be moved to $11.75. Would be my motion.
I'll step back.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. And again, the motion is that the-- not the motion, the approval was granted to hire of Roberta J. Samples, but at the rate of $10.75 per hour, now $11.75. With July 1, she will make the $11.75 per hour, since that is when the pay raise that the commission's authorized across the board for the county board these days, effective the new fiscal year. Okay, next, we go correspondence from Carrie Wallace, Administrator, requesting the appointment of Seth Blake as full-time seasonal pool director at the weekly salary of $500, effective on around May 16, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I do have a big question.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. I personally know Seth Blake, and Seth has been affiliated with the pool as a lifeguard in the past. He's a very mature and responsible individual. I believe he's going to be a junior, or sophomore.
Junior.
Junior at Wesleyan College, not Fairmont State University. So he will make an excellent candidate for that position.
And we're hoping that he will stay there for the next couple of years.
Certainly. Good. Okay, he's a real gentleman, too, I'll add as well. Correspondence from Mike Hitt Harris announcing her resignation as the Community Corrections Program Director. Effective date to be determined. Do I have a motion to approve that resignation?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Do want to state that she did an outstanding job with community corrections, and she will be hard to be replaced. But with that being said, she's moving on to another line of work. So she did an outstanding job for community corrections. Outstanding.
Very good. I echo Mr. Brady's comments. It's a very difficult job coordinating, initially coordinating three offices, and now coordinating two, but still nonetheless very difficult to manage that position with the individuals involved and the staff involved. She was a very competent, capable individual. I will miss her. Okay, moving on, we have appointment of-- approval for advertisement for Community Corrections Program Director and/or Case Manager. Applications must be postmarked on before April 25, 2015.
I would like to make one correction to that advertisement. The applications at states are available in room 303. I would like to change out to room 302.
With that noted correction, from room 303 to room 302, which is the administrator's office, we will see a motion to that effect.
I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries. Okay, next, we have approval of Louis Upsher, Animal Control Facility Volunteers, Trey Addison and Brianna Smith. Do I have a motion to approve both those volunteers?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign. Of course, they will sign the-- have signed, I'm certain, the agreement under outline their responsibilities and duties in that capacity.
Before you move on to your FYI items, would you like to speak with Prosecutor Gottman regarding item number eight?
Executive session?
No, not an executive session, but since you did just--
We had made the motion at the request of higher Roberta Samples at the rate of $11.75 per hour. Motion was made to reduce that to $10.75, since that was the dollar figure that was last paid for that position. However, effective July 1, that wage would be raised to $11.75 with any pay rates.
I'll have to go back to her. I don't know if she'll accept the position. She's taking a pay cut. $11.75 is what's being her pay.
Is her current pay where she's employed--
The person she-- oh, she's making more than-- even with the-- even if it went up to $12.75 in July, that's still a pay cut of what she's making now. But I believe that-- let me see, we're seeing place Brooklyn, Brooklyn's $10.75. I don't know if she'll accept it. $11.75 is a pay cut. The dollar raise in July is still a pay cut.
Would you be willing to negotiate if she does not accept the position?
Correct. I was-- my recommendation would be that Dave get back to his samples, provide us with an update of the situation. We can discuss it. Would you rather have a motion to hold this in the point of advance? We could make another motion if that's permissible, too.
I wanted to start next Monday, so we're going to do it today. Can't get qualified people we need.
I understand your position.
This woman's a college graduate with years of experience in this specific job.
I understand your position.
Would you like to withdraw your motion until the government is able to contact Ms. Samples, and then you can discuss afterwards?
Yeah, we withdraw them. Normally we withdraw the motion, we withdraw the approval. I presume the adults have to withdraw that. Is there a motion to withdraw then, based on this information brought to our attention?
And we have another meeting, too, special meeting?
Yes, so the agenda's already sent out, and you cannot add-- It has not been added to that agenda, so you need to discuss it today. Of course, you have a meeting at 12:00 p.m., but you can reconvene afterwards if he's able to get in touch with Ms. Samples, and then you could act on that.
Then you and I have another meeting. Then you and I also have another meeting to attend that's-- you can work that in, I'm thinking.
Does she have benefits where she works now?
No, she does not.
So coming here does have a benefit package, which would be--
That's right. But still, you can't eat benefits. You need a wage in order to buy the house.
And I understand that most of our county employees are underpaid, and I know you're shorthanded, so--
Well, we can't continue indefinitely the way we're going right now with folks we have.
Well, is there a motion to--
Well, we can, but I mean, we'll become more and more--
We have a hunt.
Is there-- I guess in order to resolve this at this point, is there a motion to withdraw the appointment and allow Mr. Gottman to re-contact the applicant? And then we can meet with Mr. Gottman later this afternoon to discuss any response from McKenna.
Would you be able to approve her hiring at that point?
Today is-- well, if there's only agenda today, we wouldn't be able to.
I'm moving. I'll wait there.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
All in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carries.
Between quarter 1:45 and 2:00, and the policy board is at 2:00, something coming up soon.
We don't have a policy board meeting today. So at 12:00, we're free to reconvene and discuss?
No, I have to be downstairs at 2:00.
Okay.
But it shouldn't last long, 2:15, 2:20.
How soon will you be able to get back to us, Mr. Gottman?
I'm gonna walk over and talk to her now.
Could you stop--
Right across the street, working in a law firm.
Could you stop back and let us know?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on then, is there any additional items? Well, now move on to items for information. Correspondence from Charles K. McKinney, West Virginia State Auditor's Office, announcing the completion of the audit report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. That report is on file and available for review by the general public. Correspondence from Carrie Wallace to West Virginia County--
Riskpool.
Riskpool. Too many things are on my mind right now. The last matter discussed. Announcing Upstate County's intention to review the property casualty workers' compensation insurance policies with the West Virginia County Riskpool. By way of explanation, Steve Rollings appeared before this commission representing the Riskpool, I think it was last week or week before last, and they all joined together, explaining the benefits of the Riskpool and the coverage that we obtained from them for various items. We have another insurance carrier that is interested in competing for that, who has also made a presentation to the commission-- also made a presentation to the Commission the past several weeks, and we will take those bids or those...provide of those policies under consideration and determine whether or not we change Riskpool to the local...
In the conversations with Mr. Powell with Loudon's Insurance, he stated that he will not be providing us with a quote unless it is one that is competitive with our current policy.
So we do not know exactly what this prime quote would be?
Or if we will receive a quote.
Right, okay. Very good, thank you. Now we have correspondence from Carol McCoy at Canadian Transmission Incorporated, providing update on the Atlantic Coast Spotlight Project, which in the printed agenda consists of three pages of a printout, which is basically available to the public, I'm certain, for the new office as well. We have agendas, notices of meetings. We have a city council special meeting that's scheduled, I guess, for the ninth, has been already held. We have meeting minutes for the public service districts. We have regular meetings for the boards of the County Commission that participates here. And we have appointments needed for upcoming boards. Our next regular meeting of the County Commission is scheduled for next week, April 23rd, 2015. So with that, we now, I guess, kind of some bills, unless there's anything other than the... Not there yet.